Without that fire system, then there is a separate provision with respect to failure to do the use or abandonment of the use for a period of time also would allow the special exception to expire. So there is a sort of a stopgap there as well.
Okay. All right. Moving along, we now have one public hearing. That is ZA dash zero one dash 2021.
From the, to a less controversial subject.
Yeah, right.
This is the first reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. It is identified as ZA dash zero one dash 2021, and it is an ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Article 11, sign standards. Puntagorda Code rewriting and reorganizing the same in its entirety, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
And if I may, to start the presentation, just to lead into this, when staff makes the presentation, you'll see that there'll be some information as to where we were when this started and first went to the planning commission, then what was changed, and then what you see in front of you today, and what additions have been made based on additional planning commission and council comments. So you'll know where you were and where we are, and then we can have discussion on the changes or any other additions or deletions you would like to see so that we can move it forward.
Okay. Good morning, Lisa Han, Ensigning Official. So the sign survey discussion started a little over a year ago. Moving forward, we did the sign survey, went to planning commission in January as a discussion. It was in the form of a draft ordinance. At that, at that meeting, planning commission had some concerns with the residential yard sign and number that was decided on by council, which was four and four square feet for residential. They had concerns with profane, obscene language and what would be permitted under the First Amendment and freedom of speech, how that works with content neutrality, what other communities were doing, and about creating visual blight. At the March 3 city council meeting, changes that were directed by council were to include definitions regarding defamation, obscenity, incitement, include security signs under exclusions, include flags with the total number of yard signs, but at that time it did not limit the flag sizes, and commercial reduce the freestanding signs from five signs per acre to four signs per acre, and to change the iconic signs, allowing them in all commercial zoning districts, not just the CRA. So we went to the planning commission in April of this year. As the first public hearing for the ordinance, we outlined the changes per the planning commission and city council. The definitions include, I can get into the presentation now because this was just a little bit of historical background. So our sign code is to provide sign standards that are content neutral, non discriminatory, provide consistency, and promote public health, safety, and welfare. It's going to simplify the sign code, define sign types, sizes, and establish permissible sign locations. We updated the definitions for equal enforcement and clarity of regulation. We also, the city attorney, defined the fighting words indecent speech and obscene language, and it set the regulations and prohibitions for any types of these signs. So when we go to primary sign types for residential areas, the main change was the residential yard signs, no permit required, four square feet in area per sign, three feet in height, must be 10 feet from the edge of the pavement, maximum of four signs per parcel, which will include flags. However, flags are not limited to the four square feet in area. We have added an update to limit the flags to 24 square feet in area. Did a little research on what is the most common ordered or sold American flag, and actually it's a three by five flag, which is 15 square feet in area, but we upped it to the 24 square feet because on a 40-foot pole, on a 40-foot pole, it says you could have a six by 10 flag. So I didn't think in the residential area that we would want a 60-square-foot flag. So we tried to come up with a happy medium on that one. And again, there's no time limit on these signs. So just an example, let me show some graphics here. Residential flags, again, no permit is required. We did update and put size restrictions. The pole height is 40 feet, maximum 24 square feet in area. It does allow two poles per parcel, two flags per pole, or if you have the nautical-style gaffin yardarm pole, four flags maximum. The number of flags does count toward the maximum number of yard signs. And maintenance, that has stayed the same, that the, can't be faded, tattered, torn flags. So now we jump into commercial. And commercial flags, we did not put any regulation on size because the maximum pole size will limit, again, the size of the flag unless council directs us to add a size for commercial flags. No permit is required. Again, two poles per parcel, two flags per pole, and maintenance stayed the same. The biggest change in, in the commercial are the freestanding signs, which are a little more temporal in nature. Size restriction stayed the same at 32 square feet in area and six feet in height, but as far as number of signs, it was lowered from what originally was suggested as five signs per acre to four signs per acre. They all must be, also must be a minimum of 10 feet from the edge of the pavement, post-supported, mostly non-permanent. Just examples of sizes. An examples of a half-acre lot would permit two signs. This 3.7-acre lot would permit 15 signs, 13 signs are shown. Ground signs, as part of the planning commission, it was brought up for a little bit of safety reasons as far as the community policing, I think environmental design standards. They were concerned about the solid base signs being a hiding place for people with not good intentions. So we have added setback requirements for all zoning districts as far as the ground signs. We've asked, also added landscape requirements in there so that all ground signs would have to be landscaped around the bottom, not real tall plants, but like more of a ground cover, and it has to be low growing within so many feet. We put it, we put the dimensions in there. Window signs, the most obvious change was we do not allow the opaque or solid graphics, even the, the ones that you can read through looking, looking into, but you can't look out. That's for safety because you want to be able to see through the window as you're coming out. Those have been requested to be not permitted, so we added that as a prohibition. On the iconic signs, we are allowing them, we took out that they were permitted only in the CRA district at council's request, that they are allowed in any commercial zoning district. We do have material requirements, and as far as murals, they have to require mural paint and sealant. There's a prohibited material list. As far as architectural criteria based on the building and historic precedents, it's to enhance any architectural compatible, architectural elements of, of the building that it's adjacent to. Again, we have permitted materials and prohibited materials for, for like some of the iconic ground signs or facade signs or projecting signs if it's in a certain design. And I can try to answer any questions legally. I'm going to turn a lot of it over to Mr. Levin if he hasn't, if there's any legal questions that need to come out.
Is a park considered commercial? Is it covered by the commercial rules?
You mean like the cities park?
Yeah.
Is this suggesting that maybe there's a concern about the 500 flags at Lashley Park?
Oh, not the 500, because I know that's a special event. But I was thinking of, you know, the, the Veterans Park, the Military Heritage Museum.
Yeah, those.
Places like that that are going to have more than four flags, and they're going to be larger than.
Yeah. Those existing flagpoles would be grandfathered in, so they're, they would not be limited by the, the provisions of the new code.
And if we were to come up with a new park and somebody wanted an American flagpole there, would we have to pass a special exemption to let it have that?
If there's, if there's.
Mr. Levin.
Yeah, go ahead.
So public par, or parks are public. It's up to city council what they will permit and not permit. So the flags and the flagpoles that are at Veterans Park are absolutely permissible because you can permit whatever you want. Everything that goes into one of our parks is approved by city council.
Okay.
When it is constructed. As far as the Military Heritage Museum, that is actually part of their plan development. They came back with an amendment to their plan development to permit the additional flagpole and a lot of their signs and proposed displays and signs for that use. So that was part of their plan development.
Okay. I would just like to go on the record as saying that I appreciate the time and the effort that our staff has put into this, and Mr. Levin, I really appreciate your guidance in all of this, but on the record, I would like to say that I, W. Kerry, like our ordinance just as much as all of the residents of Puntagorda do, and I wish like heck we didn't have to change it.
I agree.
Well, and to be legally correct, you don't have to change it. There's no, there's no government order requiring us to change it. We're changing it to be consistent with the requirements of the U.S. Supreme Court.
Which to me means we have to change it. Because I believe in the Constitution.
Liability.
Yeah, I, I would actually like to commend David for all of his hard work and the research that he's put into this, and I watched the, the planning commission meeting in April. It was a wonderful meeting, excellent dialogue. Appreciate the planning commission's time that they put into this, and the thought, and that, I, I agree, it's kind of like in some ways, I feel like we're trying to solve a problem that didn't exist in a way, but, and yet, it's, in trying to go through this, it's been painful, but, and painful for the community. And as we continue to explain to people why we're doing this, and people keep asking questions. I have, I do have one question, and that is today, under our current code, I think you can put a sign in your yard. There isn't any restriction. If I wanted to put a Happy Birthday Lisa sign in your yard, you can do it.
You could do it. That is correct.
And it can stay there as long as we want it to stay there.
You could do that, it would be under the incidental signs for residential, and it could only be 100 square inches in, in area for a residential sign. Again, we have the categories that are content related for real estate and such, but yes, you could.
People don't realize that we do, under today's code, people can put signs in yards.
They're, they're just limited in size to the non-commercial at 100 square inches. Yes, ma'am.
So it's not like, you know, because we don't see a lot of signs because people just don't do it. So, and I don't think people will, just because you can, people will. But, yeah.
Yeah, this actually limits what you can do as far as number.
Yeah, this is actually more restrictive. So, John?
Well, a friend just went over this with him recently, and he says anytime you write down more rules and regulations, you're going to have more issues to deal with, which says a lot. What we're saying to each other right now is it's a shame that we have to deal with this, and certainly as going forward, if we enact this, we will bring up more questions. And we saw the one special email this morning that were, you know, is, is our comments about profanity and fight words legis, can we really prove that, or can we? And so we could be setting ourselves up for a lot more legislation, both in turn, excuse me, internally or maybe in a court of law. So the other comment is, we've been actually without, we have not adhered to or used our code for the last year plus, and yet we are seeing very few problems.
Oh, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that at all.
Okay.
We've had, we've had some problems that have been.
But they're either, they've been resolved.
New code would not allow it.
Yeah, no.
And they were, they were situations that had to be resolved with people trying to talk to a neighbor just to see if a neighbor would cooperate for a while or whatever. I mean, it was really challenging.
Okay. Well, going back to the point that as we put more restrictions on what you can do and be more, every time we be more specific on things, we're going to get more questions about them. And I think David and staff have done a great job in trying to put all the things in there that actually we wanted in there to help protect us specifically with, with fight words and profanity.
Lisa?
Just a clarification for Ms. Prackey, Councilmember Prackey, on the incidental signs, the 100 square inches, they are limited to no more than three per parcel for residential. So right now, we're increasing it to four per parcel.
But that, but, but that, yes, that, that didn't include the political signs.
Right, that's only incidental.
Yeah, it didn't include real estate.
Right, right. So you could have had many more than the four signs for each of the different classifications.
Right.
Right. Draw how you had your hand up.
Oh, yes. I mean, mainly, I guess we, we have to make sure that we remind the public that it was our enthusiastic enforcement a year ago, is that what brought us into this, into regulation of speech thing. So this is where we are.
Yeah.
I, I just have a couple of specific things I want to, I want to bring up. The term abandoned sign, first of all, I want to ensure that every, and I know we're not allowed to single out one particular kind of sign, but any event that is done and over with, whether it be the sale of a home, whether it be a birthday party, whether it be a political sign for a campaign that ended in November, whatever the sign is, when you say an abandoned sign, that means that event is over after it's over, and we should be able to enforce making sure those signs come down within 30 days according to Florida statute. And every political sign that is out there was put up by somebody's campaign or with the permission of the owner. The owner got a sign from a campaign team, and I want to make sure that that is covered in this particular statement as an abandoned sign, because that is one of the biggest problems we are facing right now. We have dozens of, dozens of signs and flags all over the city that people are still advertising for their candidate from November, and that campaign is over. It's done. It was over on whatever, November 4th or 5th or whatever the date was, and a month after that, all those signs should have been pulled down, and Florida statute does stipulate that. So I want to make sure we don't have this ongoing for the rest of our life. That's a very big thing for me.
The question I have is, does the Florida statute say that, that the campaign, the person has to remove it, or is it if I go buy a sign supporting some cause or whatever, and I put it up, does that, and that was something that was voted on in that election, but I, I bought it, the campaign team didn't do it, I did it myself, do I have to take it down? Because that's, so it's, it's a question in, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, but all those signs are purchased from a campaign headquarters normally. Most of the campaign signs were.
You can go buy, you can go buy, there are stores here.
Oh, I, yes, I.
You can go buy politically motivated kinds of things, and that's different than going to a campaign headquarters to procure a sign. But what I wanted to hear from David is, what's the interpretation here on, is it just the campaign? Like if, when, when you run for city council and one of us runs for city council and, you know, we are working hard as a campaign team to put the signs up versus somebody deciding, I like, you know, so-and-so, I'm just going to write my own sign and put it in my yard kind of thing.
You can't write your own sign. It does say they have to be professional.
Well.
No, it's, well, for your, I can put my own sign in my own handwriting on my property.
Oh, I thought it said they had to be professionally. Did I misread that, Lisa?
It does say it's got to be printed.
I think so.
But you can run it off your computer and.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I meant like you can't, yeah, okay.
And there are stores you can go to and buy your own sign.
Sure.
And have the word put on that you'd like.
Definition of signs, page nine, number 58, means any device, structure, item, thing, object, fixture, painting, printed material, or visual image using words, graphics, symbols, numbers, or letters, designed or used for the purpose of communicating a message or attracting attention. I don't think that that would preclude handwritten signs. I think, I think the, the, there's a, the printed sign, the requirement of printed sign is with respect to a particular type of sign. Did you find?
It's usually for the special event signs.
I thought we weren't allowed to single out certain types.
Well, we're, we're able to single out certain categories of signs.
Oh, my God.
No, and I, and, and that's, you know, that's where you get into the, how many angels are dancing on the head of a pin? You know, even the U.S. Supreme Court's decisions recognize that you can make distinctions between certain categories such as commercial or non-commercial, residential or non-residential, temporary or permanent.
But not political.
But not political, not real estate, not, you know, where you, and I understand that to determine whether or not something is commercial or non-commercial may require some degree of reading the content, but, but the courts recognize that that type of distinction is not prohibited content-based. Now, I understand the difficulty that creates in interpretation or explanation, but that's, that's, those are the cards that the Supreme Court has given us, and we're trying to utilize those cards as best we can to protect the interests of, of our citizens. And as long as we follow the very narrow limitations that the Supreme Court has expressed, we should be okay from being sued in violation of the Constitution. We can always use the U.S. Supreme Court's decision as a defense in any legal action taken against us.
Okay, my question still isn't answered.
What I did want, what I did want to go to, to your question, Mayor.
Section 106, 143 specifically.
Yeah, line.
Yeah, so.
Is it line 171 in, on page four of the actual ordinance?
Right. And so the, a very controversial subject throughout the drafting of this ordinance was how to handle political signs. And, and most of the research that I did would indicate that regulating political signs and iteration of political signs is a clear restriction on free speech. Fortunately, it was brought to my attention, I think Mayor maybe was the one that did so, with respect to the provisions of Florida statute 106.143, which did have a particular time limitation for political signs. First of all, I'm not here to defend the state of Florida as to whether or not even that provision is constitutional, but we can certainly rely on it as, in our definition of abandoned sign, which we've put into this ordinance. But when you read that statute, the black letter of the statute, the plain language of the statute is directed towards the candidates themselves with respect to their responsibility for having the signs removed, whether they're defeated, elected, or withdrawn. And so to the extent that it gives us at least some, a little additional limited ability to remove signs after an election, we can only do so upon proof that the sign was placed by the candidate and not placed by the property owner who may be supporting the candidate. It's not much, but it's more than what we had. Anything else, I think, would be, would be worrisome. But.
Respectfully, I have to disagree with you on this one.
No, no, and that's fine. And so if you, if you direct that the ordinance be modified, that's fine.
I can't believe we're the only city in the United States that is facing this problem, and other cities are controlling it. Why can't we? I, I just have a real problem with this, and this is the most frequent complaint that I have received since I've been in office, is getting these signs taken down after an election, and this year in particular has been the worst ever. And now, now what somebody did was on, on Bell Harbor, they have a Trump sign, and it says Make America Great Again 2024. He took white electrical tape and taped out the zero and made a four.
So if I'm to play devil's advocate, which kind of I have to do here, that is that person's political expression of support for a candidate who hasn't even announced, but support for a candidate for an election that's four years, that's three years, what? Four years away, four years away, or less than that. Obviously, math is not my strong suit.
We know that.
But that would be the clear defense that that person would raise if we tried to enforce the sign code, saying that you cannot put a sign up with respect to a candidate for an election that's that far off and for a candidate that hasn't even declared.
So he can leave it there for four years.
They can leave it there as long as they want. And, and, and the other side of that coin is, even if it's an, even if it was a, let's say Biden 2020, and somebody left that on way beyond the, way beyond the election, clearly the argument would be, it's my political statement in support of our current president, particularly in light of those that are claiming that his election was stolen. So it would be a very easy argument for someone to make, that this is my political free speech right to put that out. And again, I am making a prediction as to what the outcome would be if someone sued us. That's a prediction. I've based my predictions on understanding case law as much as I was able to read. It is a protection against potential liability. What's the chance of us being sued? I can't, I can't predict that. If the city council wanted, was willing to take the risk, we could mod, we could, we could regulate any of these activities arguably are political speech. We'll draft the ordinance any way you want us to draft it. I'm just expressing to you what I think the courts would say if it was directed that way.
Well, the city of Fort Myers just updated their sign code, and they used the term abandoned signs to represent all political signs. That's, that's why I brought that to you to begin with, and I, I have a serious problem with allowing political signs to go on and on and on forever. I just, I think it's ludicrous, and we're getting so many complaints from residents, so many complaints. Every week I get complaints.
I, I did read to you previously from a, it was, I think it was a dissenting opinion from one of this, one of the Supreme Court decisions that gave a list of the kinds of things that could be regulated, and they did indicate, you know, limitation of, of an event, and the discussion we had at that time was, isn't an election an event?
It isn't an event.
And I think arguably it is, but there are events like a, a church bizarre event, and then there's events that have political connotation. Maybe we should wait to see what happens to the city of Fort Myers, if that survives some sort of challenge, but I'm just advising you as, as how I see it in terms of the protection that the courts are giving to. are giving to political signs and to, and to put a, a limitation on duration on political signs was, is not consistent with what the majority opinion was in the case that I referenced.
So, in the, in this particular case, the way this is worded, what we're saying is that basically any local or county or state elections where a campaign sign was placed by a campaign team, we can require those to be moved, removed by 30 days after.
If, that, I believe that's consistent with the requirements of the state statute, correct?
But it won't apply to federal elections if, if the person bought the sign somewhere else?
I, I don't, I, I don't know if our, I think our statute would apply to federal elections too, but what it wouldn't apply to is, is if somebody for either a local election, state election, or federal election, put the sign on their property themselves and not by, not put, placed there by the candidate.
Okay, that isn't resolving the situation, and I don't want to belabor this anymore. Another thing that I'd like to bring up is on line, item 268, fighting words. I would like to, personally, I looked at this and I thought, one thing it's missing is the last sentence has some disclaimers about defamatory remarks. There's nothing mentioned about political affiliation. Can we add that as a term in that description? Because that is also a problem.
I was recently provided with a, a court opinion, actually, I think it was Monday, a court decision interpreting fighting words. And in that case, they, the court suggested that even the use of the N-word would not constitute fighting words. I personally disagree, and that's why we, we put in here, after a discussion with the planning commission, we put in, well, we put in ethnicity as well to cover what is currently a problem with Asian Americans being, being singled out for hatred. I, I believe that singling out political speech should not rise to the level of a fighting word because it's not directed towards that particular individual. I think that's.
Have you seen some of the flags that are currently flying?
I've seen the flags that are currently flying, but who, who is that flag addressed to that we would be able to say would constitute fighting words? If it said, if it was addressed to the neighbor and, and particularly referred to the neighbor in some fashion, that may constitute a fighting word. But, but disparaging a political candidate, I think the key is, would a typical, normal person be incited to fight physically by just simply seeing that sign? I think that's the way the courts look at it. And there's, and I don't think that they would see it that way.
What about the sign on Peachland, which I realize is in Charlotte County, not us, but that, like, 35 school buses go by it every day?
Right.
Isn't there something?
I don't know, I don't, I'm not familiar with the sign. Can you describe it?
It's the F-word and the former candidate.
So, thank you. If the F-word appears so that it's visible in a public area, that, visible to someone under the age of 17.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Then, then we would have the ability to regulate that.
Okay.
And let me suggest, even that is somewhat of a stretch. I, I relied upon a particular decision involving the Federal Communication Commission with respect to violating the, a, a provision leading to decency.
Okay.
Where the program was broadcast during the afternoon, when it could have been heard by a minor, and it used the F-word among others. The court distinguished that because it was, could have been listened to or heard by minors, that was a problem, but if the same presentation was made at night, it wouldn't have been. So, using that court as a basis, I have defined that type of language as indecent so that we could, in our city, prevent a sign such as that.
Okay.
So, include, and, and as well as if someone was wearing it on their shirt, like at the flea marketers or on Harbor Walk, that would be something that, that we would be able to enforce under our ordinance.
And what about handheld signs?
Okay, so, handheld signs are not prohibited in general, but if the handheld signs had an indecent word on it, then yes, it could be. But, but we cannot, you know, the people with the spinning signs and stuff, we cannot prohibit that.
No, but we can prohibit profanity on the signs and also on personal apparel, correct?
Correct. Now, again, the, the correct use of, the correct words would be indecent language for, in lieu of profanity.
And we have obscene.
Well, we have obscene, obscenities, you know, that's not, that's a totally different class from what we would consider to be profane, what I consider, what I've defined as indecent, consistent with the, the case law.
Okay.
So, I mean, we've got it all covered. We've got obscene, we've got indecent, and we've got fighting, and the definitions that, that I've proposed are consistent with what the case law is. So I'm comfortable that, you know, if, if we're challenged on that as a violation of free speech, we have sufficient case law to give us a decent chance of success in that litigation.
So, let me tie all this together for a second, which will probably be impossible, but. So, just as a couple of things, when we talk about in, on page six, number 22, which started at line 268, and we're talking about the fighting words, and that added graphics, so it's graphics in there, and, and you're just generalizing here, in your opinion, the words political affiliation would not be able to be added there?
Correct.
In your opinion? And then we go over to page seven, which has number 34, starting in line 317.
Yep.
And we're at indecent speech, which is language or graphics that depict or describe what it says there in a manner that's offensive as measured by contemporary community standards. So that would be including a graphic on a T-shirt, a handheld sign, whatever the case may be, that had that type of indecent speech on it. Then we go to the next page.
I'll launch a moment. This draft is, this draft doesn't include the, the language regarding the, being able to be visible by minors.
Well, it does. We'll get there.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I'm going to tie it into that.
All right.
And then we go to page eight, number 44, which starts at, at line 359.
Right.
And we're also talking there then about obscene language, which language or graphic that depicts that, and taken as a whole lacks any justification from a political, literary, artistic, or scientific value. So that's the definitions of what those are.
Right.
And then, when we go back to page 12, which.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, which, under number two at line 568, so these are one of the list of prohibited signs, which, there's rotating signs and pendant signs that are on there, but doesn't say if someone's rotating them anywhere. But when we go to.
Should that not also include if somebody's wearing a shirt or other, a piece of apparel that has those words on it? Because that's not spelled out.
It, it says graphic, but it doesn't say T-shirt or.
Right. We're basically talking about signs here, but shouldn't that include what people are wearing?
Yeah, I, I had that somewhere in here.
I think it needs to be in.
And that's, that's exactly what I'm.
Our discussion now is Greg is pointing things out, but we're flipping from here to here to here to here to here in order to draw it all together.
Yeah.
These, these are all just definitions, and that's what, we're going through the list of definitions, which is really where the meat of it is. And the reason I want to highlight those definitions is because staff has to enforce this. So we want to make sure we have an understanding of what these mean so we can properly enforce them.
So, you know, one of the things that I think I hear this from my colleagues, that we get complaints about people putting up, whether it's a flag or a sign or whatever that has the F-word on it, or if it's on apparel or whatever. I mean, I was at Fisherman's Village, you know, sitting in one of the chairs in the concourse, and a family comes walking down the concourse, and their teenage son, who was maybe, you know, 13-ish, I mean, like, early teen kind of thing, had on a hat, and the hat said F2020 on it. And it's like, and I looked and I thought, the parents would let this kid wear this? And it's like, you know, and then other parents are going to see, because that's, we get this, because we, the complaint we get is, we don't want our grandchildren seeing this, and yet here's a family walking down the concourse of Fisherman's Village with their teenage son wearing something like that. And so.
And that gets to page 12.
So now we're going to get into, you know.
I do think we should include something specific about apparel of any kind.
Yeah, I thought it was in there. I think maybe I was, maybe we decided that under par, number 58, the definition of sign, which means includes any item or thing, I think that would arguably include something that's being worn, but it could, it could bear.
It needs to be added specifically.
Yep, yep.
My humble opinion on this anyway.
And that's why we're.
Because anything you leave just subjective opinion is going to definitely go by the wayside.
So what do they do? Make the kid take his hat off?
Well, this is, this is where we get to this, when we're tying all this together. This says any sign, so sign includes whatever definition we have for sign, which contains obscene language or graphics, and any sign containing fighting words or indecent speech, which ties all those definitions into this.
Correct.
Which is legible from any public right-of-way, well, you know, a road is a public right-of-way, a canal is a public right-of-way, there's a lot of public right-aways out there, and which, or within any public space, and which can potentially be viewed by children under the age of 17. Provision includes signs on vehicles. So, where is this enforceable when it comes to the city? We're talking about from a public right-of-way, so that means if you're driving down the street and someone has that sign in their yard, that's enforceable, but if you're in Fisherman's Village on private property where you can't see it from a public right-of-way, then that's not enforceable. So, if the kid's out, then comes from Fisherman's Village and goes down Harbor Walk, is it then enforceable?
Yes.
So that's the answer.
Yeah.
In theory, if someone complained.
Yeah, we beat that horse to death. My next, my next comment would be that I have already received one complaint about the maximum size of the flags and as it pertains to American flags. I, I know someone that wants to put a flag up that's a lot bigger than 24 square feet, and they have a 40-foot pole. And my request would be that we should consider exempting the American flag from that rule. I just think that that is an unfair restriction, and that is going to, that will cause problems. And only the American flag is the one that I want to, I'm concerned about because I think it's a, it's a person's responsibility and right to be able to fly the American flag as they, as they see fit. And I have, I've literally already got a complaint about this rule, so.
So how big of a flag, how big of an American flag do they want?
This particular guy wants to fly a flag as big as he can fly it legally allowed on a 40-foot pole.
Well, legally allowed, I don't know what that means.
Well, I mean, you know, that would, that would be in proportion to a 40-foot pole. And that is going to be potentially, you know, I don't know, five by seven, six by eight? I don't know. I don't know if he'll even do it, but he complained about it.
Actually, from the, from, excuse me, from the, sorry to interrupt, but from the website I went to regarding flag sizes, based on the pole size, it would be, a 40-foot pole can hold a six-by-10 flag, which would be 60 square feet.
And I doubt that he would fly one that big, but, but the point being that he was very upset with the 24 square foot.
Okay, so we should change the size of, the maximum size of flags to six by 10, is that, and that would solve the problem?
For the American flag only, that's.
You're, you're not going to like my answer, but.
Oh, okay, here we go, content neutral, okay.
And, and there's specific case law with respect to, I don't, I, look, I personally don't agree with some of these cases that I read, but it's not my privilege to agree or disagree with what the Supreme Court justices or the federal court justices say. And there's case law directly relating to discriminating between an American flag and some other flag that somebody feels is equally important in their mind. So, if, if, if we want to allow for a larger-sized flat American flag, then we can put, as, for all flags, a much larger size, size flag. Whether other people are going to put other-sized flags that big, I doubt whether those other-sized flags are even available, but, but we cannot differentiate between an American flag and any other type of flag.
Now, personally, I think it would be nice, and not nice, having someone sue you because you allowed them to fly a bigger American flag wouldn't be a bad lawsuit to be in. But at the same time, we would probably lose, and the problem would be what damages are assessed and what it would cost the city to lose. But just saying you can fly an American flag because you're in America, you know, if you're going to be sued for something, that's, that's.
What if we said, what if, what if we exempted one flag per property?
What do you mean? I don't.
What if, okay, we said you could only have X number of square footage for your flags with the X, but you would be allowed one flag.
Up to six by.
Up to six by whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. We could do that.
Because then if they wanted to, I mean, I know what that would do. It would mean that they could fly a, you know, any kind of flag they wanted to fly, but I, I am, I couldn't support this ordinance. I would have to vote no if we're going to exclude the United States flag.
I have to agree.
So is the matter solved by having one, one flag that can exceed?
Well, if they have more than one flag, 99% of the time, it's going to be the American flag would be the biggest one, because that has to fly at the top of the pole.
I'm comfortable with that distinction, as long as we don't call it out as the American flag.
So they could have one flag.
One flag that of up to six, six by 10.
Whatever is allowed on a 40-foot pole, because isn't a 40-foot pole the limit we have allowed?
Oh, she just said six by 10.
Yeah, so six by 10.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be okay with that, too.
One flag of up to six by 10 if the pole supports it.
Yes.
Yeah, among the total of four, so you don't get four poles.
Right, right. No, only one, yeah.
And the others.
A number, a number of things I wanted to say, but in terms of the height of the flag pole and how big a flag it can handle, I mean, you could build a flag pole that's this big around, 40-foot tall, and it could handle a flag, that's.
A garrison flag.
Yeah.
Yeah, a garrison flag, right.
So where's it, what is, what is this rule you have about six by 10 on a 40-foot pole?
Lisa Han, zoning official, this is just part I pulled off from a flag sales website. I went to several different websites to see what the average flag size is, and this is recommended flag size is determined by flag pole height, and that's, that's where I got the measurement from.
So it's not a law?
No.
Yeah.
No.
We're making it one.
Right.
Yes.
So then we could exempt one flag per property up to six by 10.
I'd be fine with that. Is everybody okay with that, Gange?
Yeah.
Okay. I just have two other small things, and then I'll be done.
We, we won't be able to complain when somebody puts a Biden 2024, six by 10 or bigger on their, on their flag pole.
No, but if they say F-Biden 2024, then we can.
Then we can.
Then we can.
As long as we can do that, I'm okay.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, going to line number 881, it says, message may not be changed more than once in a 24-hour period. We have two at least that I know of in the city that are. We have two, at least, that I know of in the city that are changeable, digital signs, one's at the VAC and one is at the Event Center, are they grandfathered?
No, the Event Center has a variance.
Okay.
And it is, the Event Center is regulated by the criteria of the variance, and the Visual Arts Center, if it's changing more than once a day, then it is actually in violation.
It does change.
They usually, they, the, the former executive director and the current, they know that it's only supposed to change once every 24 hours. It doesn't flash or scroll, but we can, we can definitely let them know. But no, it, that, that's not new in here, that's been, and that, that's been in effect, and it was in effect when they put that sign up.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to mention is on line number 929, with signs placed waterward of a seawall requiring FWC permission. There are a number of boats that have signs on them, whether they be for sale signs or other, and a lot of boats who fly huge American flags on them. Now, are they subject, it, it, would, would a boat be considered part of the four signs or flags? Or is that a separate entity because it is separate from the house? I've, I got asked this question yesterday because I have someone who had a 68-foot mast on their sailboat, and they fly a big American flag on it.
And just before you say anything, we had talked before at some point internally about boats that were not part of the physical property, and that this didn't specifically apply to potentially, and I think that was something we had to resolve.
Well, we, we discussed that the, um, uh, the boat, and that's why it's, anything waterward of the seawall is actually on city, city-owned canal. So, um, other than, other than the, we provided for the Burgee, and we provided for the Ensign, that typically are on, on boats, no other signs, including flags, would be permissible on a boat that's located in the canal?
Oh, no, 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 that is not okay. It is not okay, and not only that, you have boats that decorate for parades, and they have all kinds of signage and different things on them.
Decorations are exempt.
Well, a flag could be considered a decoration on a boat.
Holiday decorations, I'm, I'm sorry, that's what we.
Look at all of the, the regattas that occurred during campaign season.
Right.
For candidates.
Right.
Those boats came from somewhere.
They had tons of boat parades.
And they're decorated, and they stayed decorated.
And there were American flags, that's part of those, in most cases.
And in that case, if you have a couple of flags on a boat, then you can only put two on your property?
Are you cat?
No.
I was exempt boat, period.
I think this is an extreme example of overreach.
I think boats need to be exempt, exactly, boats are exempt.
Did we decide it was fish and wildlife determination, or did fish and wildlife determine that?
With respect to signs that were within a waterway, fish and wildlife has the exclusive regulatory authority.
Okay.
But it's not on boats.
But not on a boat?
Not on boats.
Does anybody else support letting boats be exempt from this ordinance?
I would say, oh, well, it raises a question, I hear where we're going with this, but we worked so hard to insert the, the indecent, the fighting language, that, that kind of language. I would really hate to see us now, all of a sudden, somebody goes, oh, but I can put this sign on my boat.
Right.
And it can sit in the back behind my house and have all this bad language on it, and I, and they can't do anything about it.
Or I can put 10 flags on my boat.
10 flags.
I mean, we, the, on, on the one hand, we're criticized for having too many regulations. And on the other side, we're, we're recognizing that there's all kinds of potential flags that can show up in all kinds of places that we may not have experienced a problem in the past. But I already, but we know, for example, that we've received complaints about somebody that's got four or more flags on their dock that's clearly visible and somewhat political in nature, and can't we do something about that? So now, we're saying, okay, well, they might not be able to put it on their dock, but they can put it on their boat.
I have a friend that flies four flags on his boat all day, every day, and he won't take them down, I don't care who tells him he has to, I just know he won't.
I don't have a problem excluding boats. We should exclude the boats, I mean, I just think that you're getting into crazy land. I mean, the fact is, we, I mean, we, we did bring ourselves into this microscope by our enthusiasm before. I think this is just where we are now, but I think the boats is a, is a dangerous place to go.
I, I just don't think we can tell people they can't fly their American flag on their boat, I think that would be suicide. Anyone else have any comments?
Well, again, on that very subject, I totally agree with American flags, but you also, if you don't do anything about boats, then they can put all kinds of profanity, whatever else, on, on that boat.
Well, we can control the profanity part of it with our ordinance.
They're not doing it now.
Or political.
I mean, we don't have that problem now, and we don't have a number of flags, we don't have a number of signs, people aren't rushing out to, you know.
No, but David's saying we can't allow flags of any kind on boats.
Well, I didn't say that, I, I mean, we, we did allow for, when we, when we talk about the Ensign, we mean the American flag. And when we talk about the Burgee, we're talking about like a yacht club affiliation. So you have two of those on a boat.
I have a friend that flies the American flag, the US Marine Corps flag, a boat club flag, and a POW flag on his boat all day, every day.
All right.
Even at his dock.
So, if we say it's okay for that gentleman to have that many flags on his boat, the person who doesn't have a boat is gonna say, well, why can't I fly that many flags on my property?
You can, you just can't put up any more signs.
Well, in this case, you said four, is that how many he had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, then they can.
Yes, you could, and one can be six by 10.
Oh, my God.
I, I stand by my first statement.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think boats should be a part of the count or whatever. I, I think in terms of a marina, in the city's marina, it's like, you know, how do you, you know, control that, we just don't want the profane, whatever.
And we can control that.
Yeah. And, you know.
If you exempt boats from this, then that's also excluded, the profanity and the.
Well, I wouldn't exempt boats from the language portion.
There's no good way out of this.
But I don't know.
No, there isn't.
Now that we're in this quid where we're stuck.
So you're saying exempt boats from the general conditions of this, but not from the definitions that define obscenity, indecent wording?
Yeah, this is really.
Can't you say something like, they can't be included in the count? And just leave it at that, flags flying on boats at your dock will not be included in the count?
Flags or signage, because signs define also flags, but you could have a for-sale sign, you could have.
All right, so I, I think you're on, on the right track. If we, if we say that, and the only thing that we're saying with respect to boats is that signs on boats would not be included in the maximum number of flags, of signs for any private property.
But.
And that would include, we'd have to include that, well, then the question is, does that include flags on docks?
Could that also then be worded so that it included all this? They, they still have to adhere to all the regulations of the land flags and the land signs?
If, if you're talking about, for example, the indecent language, by, by not excluding the boats entirely, but just including them, or excluding them from the number of, maximum number of signs, then they still would be subject to all of the other provisions, including the profanity.
You're just saying it doesn't count towards the four.
Yep.
That's it.
That would work, wouldn't it?
That would work.
Yeah.
That would work.
I'm good with that.
Now, since we're having the discussion, what about flags on docks? Is that, is, is that to be?
Docks and bootlifts are waterward of the seawall, so that's still in here as.
As prohibited.
Prohibited. We're requiring FWC.
So we can continue to maintain the prohibition on signs, seaward of the seawall, with the exception of signs on boats? You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Everybody okay?
That is still part of the property, I mean, basically, people feel like it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody concur with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Oh, geez.
Thank heavens, that's all I had, I mean, that was a lot, but I, I've gotten so many comments from people, and I got phone calls, and, and when, when my kitchen cabinet group read through this over the weekend, I started getting the emails and the phone calls and.
It's really the, the two categories, one being definitions, which really define how we enforce this and what staff's going to do with it, which is the obscenity, the indecent, the, and then what's permitted. When we went through the prohibited signs, which includes anything you can see, 17-year-old, blah, 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 all those things, and then the other category being other detail in the sign ordinance, like flag size, boat restrictions, et cetera. So definitions, prohibited signs, and the other miscellaneous detail that there were questions on.
Okay.
And just, just for the, just for the record, now, my percentages probably aren't necessarily accurate, but I would say at least 75%, if not more, of what's in this proposed code is already in our existing code. So it's not a total, total rewrite of everything.
And it's a discussion we had to have, so that we could get to the end of the.
Yeah.
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 Day, you want it?
I have one question, can I?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, do the little garden flags on the sticks count as a flag or a sign? Somebody asked me that.
Either or, because signs or flags are, so it would count as part of the total.
Part of the four.
However.
Unless it's holiday decorations.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, just have to make sure they're always for a holiday.
Well, there's plenty of holidays, so.
I know, that works. No, I was just gonna make a comment, because I, I've got a resident, question from a resident at, in Seminole Lakes, about a billboard sign that is across from Seminole Lakes on US 41 northbound. It's not in the city's jurisdiction, it's not, it, it is either in FDOT, or it's, it could be in the county, I mean, for sure it's in the county, but it's, it could be in the railway right of way, don't know whose right of way it's actually in. But it is a political sign, it says, I'm a, you know, like a political, whatever, I, I'm an army veteran, I'm voting for, and it's got the name, a first name and the city in Florida, and then there's this big paid-for by da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And, you know, this is an example of one of those signs as, that, that even the Florida statute can't address, because it wasn't put there by the political candidate.
It was a PAC.
It was a PAC that put it there.
Yeah.
And so, and the resident's asking me, when can, when can you make them pick, you, uh, city make them pick this down? I said, it's not even in our jurisdiction.
But they have a contract for a period of time, and they'll tell you that they have the right to leave it there till their contract expires on a billboard, unfortunately.
So I just, you know, I think, but it's helping us in this discussion to understand how we respond to people, and, you know, like it or not like it, it's, this is what we're faceless.
Yeah, yeah, John, did you have something?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to go back to my first comment about not being any problems with signs. I, my brain had totally forgot about the political signs, but other thing. Mine's a simple question, hopefully, and it has to do with political signs on commercial properties. Is that, uh, the political signs have to have approval from the owner to have this, have their signs up there, right? Are they part of the signs that we've allowed on a, on a, uh, commercial property? And, and the sizes, whatever it was? So that's one of the signs that they, so down on, on city marketplace, they can have 13, I take it?
Yes.
There was a specific question about what do you do with Sandstar's property, where it faces both Marion as well as Olympia.
Take the total acreage of the entire property, and that would be how many signs they would be permitted.
So, maybe, well, we don't know, where, who's a sign would be there, but you can't have more than that, who is, who's ever there? So, it's to their, to the political person's advantage to get there first, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Of course, if it was the political person that was putting those signs up, then he'd be subject to the state statute, take him down, take him down.
Take it down.
Yeah, no, I know, but they're, they're just concerned that we've had, we, often on that particular property on Marion and Olympia, we have five, five or more signs on each side, and I think that property's not that big.
I, I don't know the acreage, I'd have to, we'll have to do aerial on that.
Okay, so to wrap this up, we will need a motion to.
This is the public hearing.
Oh, great, sorry.
Could I just summarize one, and just because we're gonna live with this now, as adopted eventually. So we've talked about the abandoned signs, and we've talked about section 106, we've talked about the definition of fighting words, and we understand what the graphics, handheld signs, and discussed apparel in the definition of signs. We've talked about the indecent speech, that was number 34, we talked about obscene, what that language means, and then when we get to prohibited signs, how that all ties into number two, which says any sign that contains those, that can be viewed from a public right of way, we discussed that. Then we've also identified in another category, the flag square footage, which one would be of a larger size, and how we would deal with boats that are waterward of a seawall. And then, of course, we also just briefly discussed the change in every 24 hours for a message board, and that that was already required and is. So, other than that, and knowing the changes that were required, now we're, the changes that were discussed, now we're at this point.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to address the counsel on this issue, please come forward, and you have three minutes, state your name for the record.
I can't pass this up. Bill Drabberg, Puntagorda, for the record, I wish you could sit where I've been sitting and watch y'all's faces over the last hour when you've dealt with this thing. There's a gentleman that, at the corner of Taylor and Olympia every Saturday, who doesn't like the sheriff, and he has a sign in a shirt. So, as far as the enforcement part of it, I'm glad to see that, because every time I go by there, it disgusts me to see that gentleman there. When my colleagues and I meet in Orlando, we talk about different things in our city, and I always talk very proud about our city. And consensus is around the table, is the worst city to work with in the state of Florida is Alderman Springs. They have regulated themselves to the point where nobody wants to even work in there, they can't get anything done. I, I worry that we might be going down that same road here, this thing is so convoluted and so, I can't, I'm try, I work with it, I'm working with y'all all the time, and I've read it like 20 times, I, I can't figure it out myself. We have a good sign ordinance now that just needs to be tweaked. I, I called the National Association of Realtors and asked them the question, is there cities around the country that are, that are not allowing open house signs? And to their knowledge then, they didn't know of any, but they were gonna get back to me, unfortunately, they didn't get back to me before this meeting. And, and I don't know of many cities, and maybe our attorney can answer that question, is, are actually looking to go down to this content-neutral sign ordinance that we're trying to do now here. I, I mean, I don't hear it, you probably haven't either. So maybe we had, because he told us, we don't have to do this, we can take our existing sign ordinance and work that and fix it, to tweak it the way we want it. But we're talking about signs on boats, we're talking about signs all over the place, I don't know how, would you ever gonna enforce it? It, it's an absolute mess. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the counsel? Anyone else that would like to address the counsel on this subject, please come forward?
I'm Ken Rolland, and I'm a resident of Punta Gorda Isles, I'm also a realtor, and one of my, it was actually said earlier in the meeting, when Sam Shepard made the remark, it needs to be enforced, and it needs to be enforced tough. I don't, I probably heard and put my sign in the wrong place, but the people that are doing these things outside, like putting things, or outside the law, like putting things on the right-of-way, which has always been prohibited, there needs to be some deterrent that hits them where it counts. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address counsel on this subject? Last call, anyone else like to address counsel on this subject?
Move to close the public hearing?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Lisa, one more question. Just, what are the implications directly for the open house signs, like what does this do differently in regard to what people can do?
Okay, so, again, we go into content neutral, not looking at content, whether you could have the sign on somebody's private property with their permission, it would just count toward those total number of four signs or flags.
As long as it's not in the right-of-way?
As long as it's with, it, as long as it is 10 feet back from the edge of the pavement, yes.
Okay.
And you could have them on every property down the street, if you got permission.
If you had permission, and it doesn't exceed the number of signs that they already have in there, yeah.
And are people allowed then, but are they able to have any in any right-of-ways to be able to be directional, to get them to that place?
No, the only right, signs that would be directional are for approved special events, which we have the criteria for special events in the event manual.
Let's see, I don't know.
You could put directional signs on private property.
Yes, you could put directional signs on private property, that is correct.
But you couldn't have them in the right-of-way, it would have to be off the right-of-way.
So other than tying our hands on political signs, it's basically the same sign code as we had before? Okay, so what is your pleasure in terms of a motion, guys?
I guess I will move that we approve the sign ordinance as amended during our discussion today.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ZA-01-2021 as amended, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing, and let's take a 10-minute break.